Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the Monday, February 4th, 2019 City Council's study session to order. Our first topic is the Kohani Park Master Plan. Mr. City Manager.
And I'm gonna call Ms. Fisher.
And I'm gonna call, okay. Okay, you're ready. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and public and fellow staff members. The Parks and Recreation Department is before you to present the Kohani Park Master Plan project. Tonight's staff is reviewing what a park's master plan entails, the little history of Kohani Park, as well as a selected project consultant for which we will be asking council's approval on tomorrow night's agenda. Tonight is solely informative but informs tomorrow night's decision. Shelby Pearl is the project manager for this, but she was unable to get into work today. So Anjali is gonna do the presentation, I'm sure she'll do a coin job. If we get stuck with any questions, we're gonna punt to Shelby to answer those. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Anjali Meyer, Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Angie. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. City Manager. With Angie's introduction, I'm gonna jump right in. As Angie mentioned, there are three simple parts to the presentation tonight. The first is, what is the master plan? We'll go over our typical master plan process. We'll take a peek at the existing conditions of Kohani Park, and then we'll also take a look at how this fits into our park's CIP as well as a project timeline. So what is a master plan? A master plan is a high-level guiding document that it's really a vision for the park and helps, it's a tool that serves all the park implementation projects that follow. The first step to the master plan process is a site analysis and project scoping. Once we have a consultant onboard, they evaluate the existing conditions of the site and they understand the park as it is used today and as well as adjacent uses. We also look for inspiration at other parks in other jurisdictions around the country and what current trends are. So some examples of site studies are wetlands and stream reconnaissance, and then the topographic study and geotechnical investigation if we are to build any buildings on the site, and also to understand infiltration. And really, the purpose of this is to understand the opportunities and constraints, any steep slopes, wetland, buffers, areas that we cannot design active uses on. And to the right is a graphic of site studies for Big Rock Park, Pases A and B. Alongside, we also start an online survey where we're trying to understand from the community at large what they would like to see in the park. And then we start our set of public meetings. So the first set of public meetings, we really go out into the community, we go to our Parks and Recreation Commission, and we come to City Council to understand everyone's hopes, dreams, and concerns for the park. And also then, you know, we share any amount of existing conditions and studies that we have to help you understand the opportunities and constraints. So once we've heard from the community, from our leadership, and we've also analyzed the results of the survey, the consultant goes away and then comes up with two or three alternatives for the park. And then we bring that back to the community, to the Parks Commission, and to City Council, and we get your input on all of those. So here is an example from Big Rock Park. We had three different alternatives, and then we landed on one. And as you can see, the preferred design didn't really match one, two, or three. It was a blend of a few options. So it's not to say that any one, you know, sometimes one option just stands out as the best. In other cases, we can pick amenities from different options to arrive at the preferred master plan. So once we have that preferred master plan and we have the go-ahead from council, we then do a SEPA check list. We quantify any environmental impacts on the improvements that we proposed, and that whole process along takes about three to six months. And then, once we have successfully completed that, we come back to City Council to officially adopt the master plan. And what we have at that point is really a master plan report that has documented all the work done during this process. We have a preferred master plan drawing, and we also have some phases identified based on priorities as to which improvements will be built first, with a very rough order of magnitude of costs for each of those phases. And it is at that time that council decides to allocate funds to the project, and that gets put into our park's CIP, and then we would do design and construction of any phases of the project. So this master plan takes about 12 to 18 months. And then after that, once funds are allocated, an additional year or two for the design and construction. So it's a minimum of three to four years before you would see any improvements built on the park. So now we'll peek at the existing conditions of Kohani Park. It was built in 1994 by the developer and turned over to the homeowners association. And, sorry, it was turned over to King County. And it was built to King County specifications. And then in 2016, when Kohani was annexed to the city of Sammamish, Kohani transferred to the city. And that same year, you know, to make them feel a part of Sammamish, we actually moved some of our summer programs to the park. We have our kids' moon series there, we have Shakespeare in the park. And then we also started scheduling the fields. In 2017, some minor drainage improvements were completed at the baseball field, and we've been able to schedule the field a little better after that. And this year, we are proposing to commence a master plan for the park. So to orient any of those watching this presentation, Kohani Park is the southeast of the city. We are seated in the Commons along to 28th. We have Pine Lake Park to the northwest, and we have Beaver Lake Park to the north. This is a close-up area showing Kohani Park. The dashed white outline is the outline of the park. It's about 64 acres. You have Challenger Elementary School and Beaver Lake Middle School to the east and residential community to the west. A large part of Kohani Park is the Queen's Bog, apparently one of 50 bogs in the state of Washington. We have a small parking lot at the entry of a southeast Kohani Boulevard, and a small play structure and restroom as well. And then we have some fields. We have two rectilinear fields used for soccer and lacrosse, and then we have a cricket pitch between both fields. And we have a baseball field to the north of these fields. And finally, we have a system of trails. We have some natural trails around the bog, and then we have the East Plateau Regional Trail that is actually still maintained by King County. So with that, we'll take a look at where this fits into the park's CIP. So the park's CIP, that was a part of the 2018 Parks and Recreation Open Space Plan, identified Kohani Park Master Plan as the second highest priority. The first priority was the YMCA Property Development Plan that was completed in June of last year. And, you know, there are really two types of master plans. Sometimes we have a clean slate like Big Rock Park, which has never been a park, and, you know, we get to do a master plan for those. But then we also have parks like Kohani Park or Beaver Lake Park that have been around for a long time, and a lot of the amenities are seeing the end of their life cycle. And rather than go in and make piecemeal improvements, it's really a time to, you know, take a step back and look at it as a whole with the changing needs of the community. And in this case, the usage has grown from, you know, the 11,000 or 12,000 people in Kohani to the 65,000 people that are part of Sammamish. And so a master plan is a process that engages the entire community, and this one will be the latter kind of master plan. So for next steps, we have a contract for planning and design services that is in your packet for tomorrow's meeting. And once we have authorization from City Council to get our consultant onboard, we will begin site investigation and analysis and develop a community survey as well. As for timeline, we started the consultant selection process late last year, and we'll have our kickoff meeting soon, winter 2019. Site investigation and analysis will be completed by spring of this year, the park program by the summer, and the master plan development by the fall of 2019. After that, we go away and do the SEPA review, hope to wrap that up at the end of the year, if not early next year, and bring a master plan for adoption to City Council by the spring of 2020. And with that, open and adopted questions.
Councilmember Paul Gorman.
Yeah, two questions. The first question, going back to the existing conditions of the field, and you have there the cricket pitch and the multipurpose sports fields there. On the left, you have the baseball field. And we're gonna go through an extensive work on these fields. Would we not look at that baseball field as we did on the Eastlake High School, where the Eastlake High School baseball field was then turned into a multipurpose field as well?
That is absolutely a possibility. So we'll actually just probably go back and analyze how it's being used today, probably analyze the broader uses of the community, and understand all the demands that we are facing for rentals, and then look at the available site. And Angie, did you want to add something?
If I can add to that as well. This is a natural turf complex right now, and I think there's the option to look at artificial turf in this location, especially with, you wanna go back a little bit into some of the areas. You know, we have the two schools to the east. To the south, you have a road in open space to the south and to the west. You do have some residential area, but quite a buffer there with heavily treed. And to the north, again, a street and some open space. So when you start kind of looking at, you know, light, added lighting features to artificial turf to make it viable, this has a much less of an impact than some of our other facilities. So I think it's definitely a viable option to study.
Second question that I had, dealt with the budget. I guess it jumped at me that for the master plan for 2019, as you mentioned, you have $200,000. And for the Y indoor feasibility study, and again, these fields are pre-existing out there, which is the indoor facility, it was half that amount that's scheduled for 2019. And so I would've thought that that's counterintuitive, at least to me. I would've thought that you would've expected the outdoor, just the natural field study to be a lot less than the new indoor feasibility study.
So the YMCA property, we did not identify it as a traditional master plan. So the two major differences were that we did not have the whole public process as a requirement for that. A large part of this master plan would be three sets of, so nine, public meetings that the consultant will present at and prepare for. And so that's a large part of it. And then with the master plan, we are also going into a little more extensive studies for sensitive areas as well as, go ahead, you know, we're doing a preliminary survey as well.
It just strikes me that the master plan is one-fifth of the price of what the artificial turf fields were. It used to be talking about a million dollars for the replacement, for the replacement of a turf field. So 200,000 jumped at me, and I'm looking at that 100,000 feasibility. Okay.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Two items that jumped, this is, I live in Kohani, I can see my house on here. So two things. One, there's a baseball field just south of this, just south of Kohani Boulevard that is, I mean, I can only tell you the cricket field, the baseball field are very, very frequently used. And they're incredibly important assets to the Kohani neighborhood and to Sammamish Parks and Recreation overall. So I definitely support any kind of improvements that we could make on it. The one thing that I heard a lot of on the doors, no lights. No lights, no public nightlight games. It's so close to so many houses. That's the one thing I must've heard a lot of. So I bet, just wanna put that out there. Secondly, the Queen's Bog. In the summer of 2015, there was a group of transits that were living, camping down in that bog, and a campfire got out of control. And I happened to have a thermo seat for that for the next four days while Eastside Fire and Rescue, thank God, parked their vehicles and ran in front of our house and literally had to put out that fire because it did get underneath all the peat into the bog. So I guess my question, or my hope is that you can, when you go through your vetting process and you're trying to find a consultant to perform these things, you know, one of 50 bogs in the state. I mean, that's an incredibly important resource for our city, for our state. Anything we can do as a city to try to, yes, make it more accessible for those kinds of natural or man-made disasters like fires. It was impossible for people to get down in there and try to fight the fire. And it was amazingly difficult for anybody me to. So anything, any professional acumen or experience that those people could bring in, I don't know if they could, because they're so few in the state, but that, I think, is an incredibly important resource that we are zeroing in on, making sure we're protecting that. And then also, I'll just add in the third line, there's the gas line that runs right down the heart of it on the west side there, you can kind of see the easement there. You know, homeowners like myself, there, we get our annual thing saying, hey, there's a gas line here. Just melt this, it's something looks weird, you know, here's the number to call. So it is a major gas line that runs, you know, up and down Sammamish, but this is, happens to be where it cuts through Kohani, so, and right through the park and right through the bog. So there's a couple different things in there that I would at least, you know, but just for clarification, that we need to make sure that the consultant is acutely aware that those complications exist, and just be aware of them as they go forward in terms of how they manage the park and come up with ideas of how to help us better utilize it and protect it. Thank you.
Councilmember Russ.
Thank you. On the contract amount for not to exceed 169,000, which is 150,000 plus 16,000 to cover additional services, does that also cover cost overruns of existing services contracted for?
We typically kind of put in a 10% buffer in there in case during the process. So the contract is for 160-something.
150, and then the 16 is for the overrun.
The overrun. So because if we get moving along, if we find that we need to do a study for another $2,500 or something, that we don't have to come back to council to ask for those small incremental changes. So we ask for approval of the contracted amount plus 10% to kind of prevent that.
So the management reserve that can be either used for cost overruns or?
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, I have a question for, in terms of sort of the overall planning. I know we have agreements with the various school districts to use their facilities. When you're doing the master plan here, will you consider, you know, what kinds of changes the school district or the school district plus the city may be considering with Beaver Lake and Challenger in terms of fields and other park things? I mean, I know there's, you know, potential parking over at the schools, which is nice. We don't have to incorporate that, but it just seems like being right up against that. Especially when, one of the things I think Sammamish is sorely lacking is that concept of, you know, multiple fields together where people have that sense of community when they play ball. I know when, when we were in Little League, it was, it was fun, but it could've been more fun if we had a complex with four fields, right? Where everybody was together, no matter what team you were playing. So when I look at this and I see, oh, you know, there's another field over there, it'd be kind of cool if we had that kind of concept. So is that part of the work that you'll do here as well?
Absolutely. Another element to this master plan is that this park was developed into the King County Park System, right? So now we're looking at this park and how it fits into the Sammamish system. And that includes school facilities and public facilities. So in that capacity, kind of looking at the neighboring schools adjacent to this and shared facilities. One example is that there's a perimeter fence on the elementary school that doesn't even have a gate between the school and the fields. And so when they take groups of kids out of the school over to the field, they actually have to go out onto the sidewalk, down the road, and then back into the park. So there's obviously a silo there, right, between the two facilities. So we definitely have lots of opportunity there to work together, both with the middle school and the elementary. And one of our parks commissioners is a longtime teacher at Challenger Elementary as well, so that helps.
Thanks. I don't see any more questions, but just for those watching and to touch a little bit upon Councilmember Ritchie's concerns, I think that's the public process and the master plan process, correct if I'm wrong, will kind of address some of those concerns that the immediate neighborhoods have. And then, of course, the greater Sammamish and their needs as well. And so we'll be able to extrapolate all that information and roll that up.
Absolutely. There's a lot of new technology when it comes to lighting fields and a lot of new information about that that we'd be happy to share.
Good, thank you. Appreciate the presentation here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, our next item is a discussion relative to the recommendations of the Planning Commission on the permanent updates to development regulations. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, and I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Thomas, Mr. Powell, and I'm gonna walk you through some changes here.
All right, good evening, council. While David couldn't set up here, I'll make a few introductory remarks. This study session is for essentially Phase 1 of the city's zoning and subdivision code update. Purpose of this project is to bring, Phase 1 project at least, is to bring some sort of permanency to the interim regulations that City Council adopted on September 18th of last year, essentially referred to now in City Hall as Phase 0. Your last touch on the subject was back on November 6th, when action was taken to adopt a fairly succinct set of additional changes to the interim regulations from September. I think there were seven or eight total that we discussed and took action on. Since November, we got to work pretty quickly on this and conducted a series of study sessions with the Planning Commission, starting in December, carrying over into January. Those study sessions led to some proposed permanent regulations that would essentially replace the interim regulations. The commission considered those just last week at their public hearing on January 31st, and by a vote of 6 to 0, have recommended a set of permanent regulations to you that are contained in your packet. There's a couple of different versions in your packet. Exhibit 1, or Exhibit 2, I believe, is a clean version that was initially provided. We had to do some document recovery and rebuilding, and our legal team helped us out with that last week. So we added Exhibit 3, I think, once the initial packet last week was published. Exhibit 3 is actually a strike-through, so it's a lot clearer for your eyes when you go through to see what exactly has changed from the interim, or what is proposing to change from the interim regulations to a set of permanent regulations. As we fight our PowerPoint here momentarily, David's gonna take you on a tour of the PC recommendations to, of course, prepare you for your February 11th public hearing, that's next Monday, on this subject. What we're gonna do is we're gonna cover eight subject matter areas. And for each of those eight areas, if applicable, we're gonna cover three things, essentially an overview. We're gonna cover what the former, essentially what was the former regulations prior to September 18th of last year, and then what the current interim regulation is, and then how that leads to any Planning Commission-recommended changes to those subject matter areas if any changes are recommended by them, if that makes sense. So each subject matter area will essentially have a little three-part presentation to it. I think David's slides are essentially going to, the words that you're gonna see on the screen will cover essentially the Planning Commission's recommendation, but we'll provide that backstory for you along the way as we move through. With that, you're ready?
As ready as we're gonna be. I apologize for this, I couldn't get it to jump over. We've had a few technical difficulties lately, and I have to load everything onto the desktop.
Just a few.
So with that, David Powell, Department of Community Development, good evening. We received recommendation from the Planning Commission to adopt some permanent development regulation changes. They are generally organized into eight topics. For example, density rounding, setbacks, fences, et cetera. The primary focus with the commission during discussion was on the operative language, on the concepts and the outcomes. There was less of a focus on the actual numeric setting, as those are adjustable. We think about development regulations, we think about them in terms of dials and levers, that so long as you have the operative language and the code correctly stated, that you can fairly easily adjust, if you will, dial one way or another to achieve a little bit of a different outcome. So for example, setbacks, if you wanted to increase the separation between buildings, you would just simply adjust the setback to be what you think is the most appropriate for the community, depending on the character outcome you were attempting to achieve. There were also some associated changes made. When you change one thing in the code, often you have to chase it down and change the entire term throughout the code. So you might see that those changes are reflected in the strike draft version that was included as Exhibit 3 for this evening's meeting. The first of these was density rounding. You may recall that historically, Sammamish had allowed partial units of density over .5 to round up. So if you were proposing a division of land for development and you had achieved, say, 2.53 units, you would've been allowed to build three units with that project. With the interim development regulations, we changed that, and we required that projects that did not achieve a whole unit rounded down. So in the event that you had that same project, you would have only been able to build two units, unless you actually achieved a whole unit. So in the case of a 2.99 density, you would've achieved two. In the case of 3.01, you would've achieved three. With the permanent proposed development regulations that the Planning Commission recommended, we have changed it to be reflective of the size and scale of a project, and we have changed the decimal point. If you, again, go back, think about the decimal point in terms of a dial that you can adjust. The decimal was set for long plats that achieve more than or equal to 10 units before rounding. So one thing that's important to think about here, this is a little confusing when you look at it initially, but if you think about how it's being done, what we're doing is we're thinking about the number of whole units that you have when you've completed the density calculation. So before you look at the decimal point, you see how many you've achieved. If you've achieved more than, or greater than or equal to 10, then you are going to be rounding up at .51. So in this example, 11.65 would be 12, 11.41 would be 11. If you came in at 9.99, you would be in the next bracket, which is less than or equal to nine units before you consider the decimal point. So that's how the commission determined they wanted to proceed. They felt that rounding up for long plats and bigger projects had less of an impact on the community because that additional unit was something that you might not notice as readily as if you were rounding up more simple. If you were facilitating rounding up for smaller projects, like short subdivisions, that that is something that the community takes note of because the perceived density of a smaller project with more units is something noted by individuals, as opposed to a larger project. Say you had a 30-inch subdivision, and you were able to achieve one more unit, you may not notice it because of the scale of the project.
David, I've got some questions up here. Councilmember Morris.
So I think you just answered my question, actually. But I wanted to better understand because it was contrary and flipped from what the master builders had recommended. What was the master builders focused on? Was it just the value of the land to be able to give a short plat more value? Is that what it was?
My understanding is that their comments, and I have to ask them, so I'm just basing on what my perception is, is that we more frequently see short subdivisions in the city. We have fewer and fewer as time goes by and there's less land of that size. We have fewer and fewer long plats. So that this would be something that would be applied more frequently to short subdivisions. They also have found that it, my understanding is, is that it helps them. They also have found that it, my understanding is, is that it helps them financially make a project worthwhile because of the cost of land.
Okay, Councilwoman Hornish.
Yeah, the one question I have is that you, sorry, you have less than or equal to 10 and greater than or equal to nine. So if I have 10, which calculation do I use? So shouldn't those be the same number? And one should be less than or equal to, and the other one should be greater than, as opposed to having that overlap there?
It's whole units, so it could just be...
Right, but greater than or equal to nine and less than or equal to 10. That means that if I have the number nine, it is unclear which fraction I would use.
So it's greater than or equal to 10 and less than or equal to nine?
Before rounding.
Before rounding?
Before rounding.
I get that, but... I see, so you've got the variable is on the other side, okay.
Are you asking what happens between 9.01 and 9.99? Is that your question?
Yeah, so there's, it just feels like, so you're saying if it's less than or equal to nine, so if it's nine or less, then I use the .71, and if it's 10 or greater, then I use the .51. So what happens in between nine and 10?
Yes, so if you were doing a density calculation and you ended up with 9.71 units, or, well, that's a bad example.
9.99.
9.99 units. So you don't quite have 10. You have a partial decimal, you know, a decimal of .99. So you would only look at the whole number in order to...
Before, so you look at it before rounding.
So you know...
So you think it's just a hardcore cutoff, everything after the decimal point?
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Valderrama.
Now, I'm going back to Councilwoman Hornish's question because to me it would seem counterintuitive as far as from the... I understand what they're saying as far as noticing on one development, but the impact on an individual homeowner who had planned to subdivide, and he could subdivide into three, and now is told he can only subdivide into two, is a much greater impact to that homeowner than to the development that has potentially 12 and now does 11 on to that. And so the individual homeowner is taking a much greater wholeness on this development under these standards. Yet the individual homeowner has less wherewithal, especially when you're getting to people who are more senior, who are more likely to subdivide and to go into it. So it seems to me, I like the ratios, but I would think it would make more sense the other way around just because of the impact on our citizens directly. And I don't know if staff had gone through this.
So this is an interesting one. Going back in history a little bit, you know, some of the work we started to do on development regulation updates a year ago now or more, some of that initial research was really compiling comments and testimony and, you know, the subject matter of appeals that had been filed with the hearing examiner over what are the constituents and citizens of Semamish saying about development, specifically single-family development and the creation of, you know, new residential development. One of the prevailing trends in some of the digging that we did on this particular subject was there was a term for it, I forget exactly what it was, but it was kind of five for four type thing, where you've got an acre of R4 zoned land and for just a little bit sliver more, I think it was .1 something, whatever it was, you would end up with that five units in an R4 zone type of situation. So that led to the original interim regulation proposal of rounding down. And then when council had your last conversation in November on this subject, there was some discussion, I recall on November 6th with the council, councilmember Valderrama, what you just said, which is take a look at, and have the planning commission take a look at and discuss this situation. They did that, and they ended up feeling the way they feel here in the recommendation, which was the short subdivisions that extra unit, that they felt would have more impact. So this is the recommendation we ended up with, but then they also tried to, I think, add a little bit of middle rounding here with the variation would be greater than 10 or less than nine and, you know, where that rounding occurs. So they reintroduced some rounding. And yeah, thank you for pointing that out. Also, I was neglecting the introductory remarks to mention, we actually hosted a focus group back in December as the planning commission was getting ready to start their work on this. And the focus group was made up of equal part, actually slightly more part Semamish citizens and slightly lesser part Semamish development community members. And that was actually one of the discussions and conclusions of the focus group was something somewhat similar here to the planning commission recommendation to you. So we have swung the, bottom line is we swung the pendulum back and forth a little bit on this. And several of you have the tough job of deciding where it stops, so... But good questioning, yes, we've covered all angles on this.
Councilwoman Ross.
Maybe it was related to the size of the structure where the master builders came up with similar ratios. Am I, is that correct? It wasn't related to units. They came up with .5 and .7 based on size. Is that right?
I'm not sure. I've not heard that.
Let's have the document, I don't... I think that's, I'm just trying to check on the memory CD.
I have a quick question. Where did they come up with .71? It seems like if you were to split the difference, you'd go .75, so why .71? Or how did they arrive at that, just out of curiosity?
They were trying to drive it down far enough that it would be appealable still. So if it was .75, it would be just a little higher number, a little more difficult to attain an additional unit.
Okay. No more questions?
The second topic, this is sure to be one discussion, setbacks. So if you recall with the old regulations that were in place, upon the cities incorporation, we had adopted King County regulations that included a street setback and an interior setback. And the interior setback was five feet, so your sides and your rear of the property would have a five-foot setback. It allowed for fairly small lots to be built, and it allowed for different-sized homes to be placed on those lots. Back in 2016, the rule was changed to require a 5, 7, and 15 interior setback. Didn't matter where you put the 5, 7, or 15, so long as you have them accounted for. With the interim development regulations, we changed the orientation as to how we measure setbacks from a street setback and an interior setback to a front yard setback, a rear yard setback, and then side yard setbacks. And with that, we also increased the numeric value of those setbacks. And the math that we did there was where we were targeting a certain lot size so that with a standard footprint, and I think it was a 2,500 square foot footprint that we were looking at with the home size, that we would be achieving a lot size that was similar to many of the adjacent comparable jurisdictions to Semamish without also adding a minimum lot size to our code. So if you recall, part of our past discussion was that there is a multitude of combinations of development regulations or zoning controls that you could have in your code. But in order for you to fully assess how all of those function, you have to take into account how they work together. For example, you can't always compare across the board the setbacks of one jurisdiction to another without looking at what other restrictions also complement the setback within their code. It's very difficult to do a straight comparison of only one of the zoning controls. So with the proposed regulations that the planning commission passed off to you, it got a little more complicated, but also the focus was to allow for three categories of setbacks. The first category would be generically applied to structures. So say, for example, you wanted to build a trellis in your backyard, or you wanted to build a standalone carport, or a standalone garage, or a shed. Or say you wanted to build a covered outdoor kitchen, which we've seen many of recently, that was detached from your home. Well, then the standard structure setback, which is the first category, would apply to your project. The second bucket...
Can you repeat that again?
So what this is, is there's three categories of setbacks that were created with this proposed regulation. The first category is generically applied to all structures. So say a detached carport, a shed larger, you know, large enough to more in the setback, a large trellis or some sort of feature, then this standard setback would apply. The second category is new detached single-family residences or detached single-family residences. So if you had a vacant lot and you wanted to build a new home, the setback would apply to the new home. You could still include on your site plan other structures, but that would be covered under the first setback. So it gets a little more complicated, but what the commission was working towards is they wanted to have a variable setback that corresponded to structure size. So if you wanted to build a large home, then you had a larger setback. If you wanted to build a small home, then you needed a smaller setback. So what they did was they created different subcategories within that, which the first is a bracket of up to 2,500 square feet of finished space. So there would be a setback, this a smaller setback that applies to a home that is less than 2,500 square feet. The next bracket was between 2,500 and 4,000 square feet. So there's a different setback that corresponds to 2,500 to 4,000 square feet. The third category was 4,000 square feet and greater. So if you were proposing a 5,000 square foot home, then you would fall into the larger setback category. The reasoning for this, as I understand it from the commission, was that they felt that lot size shouldn't necessarily correspond with structure size. So if you had a large home, you should have a larger yard, larger lot. So that was the second category. The third category was, one, the commission was interested in seeing some diversity in some of the housing choices here in the city be brought forward. And one way to achieve that was to add some flexibility for detached accessory dwelling units. The code already allows detached accessory dwelling units to be built in single-family districts when they are less than 1,000 square feet, amongst other restrictions. So what the commission did was they said, hey, we'd like to see some setbacks that relate uniquely to detached, standalone detached accessory dwelling units. Now, this doesn't include things like if you wanted to build a detached accessory dwelling unit over a garage, or you wanted to build a detached accessory dwelling unit that was also attached to a pool house or some other structure or amenity. What this is, is simply related to a basic 1,000 square foot detached accessory dwelling unit up to 18 feet in height. And they included a five-foot side yard and a five-foot rear yard setback for that. So that is the third category. So they also, as part of this, realized that, hey, you might be trying to build a new home or do an expansion to your home and be subject to a setback that is making it difficult for you to design a site plan or floor plan that works for you and your family. So what they said was, we'd like to see you figure out a way to allow for a reduction of setback. If you are in agreement with your neighbor, why not allow for them to, why not allow for an older or a homeowner to reduce the setback down? So they had us add a clause that allows for a reduction of setbacks when you have an agreement with your neighbor that is recorded to the title of both properties. And it cannot be less than five feet. It cannot cause for a conflict with other codes, construction codes like, for example, the building code requires certain separation between structures, otherwise you have to treat it with a firewall, that type of thing. So that was the last change that was made with regard to setbacks.
I have a bunch of questions. Councilwoman Hornish.
So we're starting with the data. Starting with the data, there was a public comment about height restriction, I think you said 18 feet. What was it before?
We had the same height restriction as all other structures in the city.
Which is a function of setback from the street now, right?
For, well, depends which category you're talking about. So under the interim rules, the height limit would have been 35 feet.
And we took that down to 18?
We took it down to 18 for a standalone detached accessory dwelling unit.
What was the rationale for that?
The rationale was, is that if we were granting a five-foot setback from the side and rear line, we did not want a 35-foot tall structure right up against the property lines in the corner of the property.
But if it's 10 feet setback, they still limit it to 18? What's the side setback? I don't have it in the top top of my head.
It depends.
But one thing that could be done with your direction is you could ask for an additional change to be made to this that says that if you need the setback for standard detached residential structures, that you could build it to 35 feet in height. That only if you're locating it and taking advantage of this reduced setback for that category, would it be limited to 18 feet.
Gotcha. All right, that's good to know. The other question I have is on the setbacks, there was a Pollyanna theory that by doing the setbacks, you're decreasing the amount of billable land. Is that true or is it not true?
I think it depends on what you mean by billable. These days, we have so many overlapping regulations, and this is a consistent comment that Gina Clark from Master Builders made in the planning commission public hearing, is that there's, it's a competition for space. You know, between tree retention requirements, tree root zone protection areas, infiltration areas for low-impact development, stormwater manual requirements, sewer easements, water easements, replacement trees when you're taking out trees, you're required to replace them. It's competition for space. So it'd be, I would find it hard to say that we are causing for undevelopable area because even if a home is not being placed on that portion of the property, there is a large portion of the property that is required for other amenities that go along with it.
Councilwoman Valderrama.
It sounds like we've encumbered it so much that there's little left to encumber it with. I guess it's my concern. I understand the idea of the setbacks, and I understand the idea of lot size, of the house or the house structure determining it. And I understand that there are some exceptions that can be done if you work the deals with your neighbors. But it would seem to me that inherently in the rules are for R6, R12s would have, despite the structures that are put onto it, or could have a different character that we want to get in different setbacks, whether greater or less for each one. And so did you explore that and look into having for those type of zonings, different types of setbacks? And that flexibility or lack of flexibility at that level?
Given the, sort of, the very closely related nature of each of the zones, between R4 and R6 specifically, the dimensional standards are not much different. It really comes down to the density that the density calculation yields and the amount that is able to fit on a piece of property. The zoning controls could be adjusted, although it's hard to create a system where you have a noticeable difference between the different controls, given the nature of R4 and R6. R1, sure, you could require a larger setback in R1, and it would be noticeable. But R1 is fairly dramatically different than R4 and R6.
Councilwoman Ross.
Yeah, thank you. So you made a comment, I like the variability based on house size, right? Because that does, without having to name specific lot sizes, it does allow you to kind of adjust that. But you made a comment that you said it was finished space. And one of the things, I want to make sure, is we don't have a loophole here, where I can build a three-story home with an unfinished basement, call it 2,499 square feet, and and call that a day, right? And be able to use a different setback. So is there a way that we can change that wording, so that it's potential finished space, as opposed to just the finished space, so that builders can't get around that loophole, right?
I think it's how you define it. So we could, one request the council could make, is that we include a definition of finished space, or whatever that term is that you want to use. You know, the commission questioned whether that should include garage space or not, or, you know, because ultimately, it's a question of volume.
Right.
If volume's what you're trying to address, then you could make it gross floor area, or you could make it finished floor area, or heated space, something along those lines. Really, the question is whether you want, there's three different categories, as I see it. One is, is you could include just heated space, or potentially heated space.
Right.
The next would be potentially heated space plus garage space. And the next would be potentially heated space plus garage space, plus any other areas in the building that add to the volume. You know, there are attic spaces, and there's different ways to pitch a roof or design a roof, that add to the perceived volume of a structure. So if that's what you're trying to address, then we could do that that way.
Do you have any examples of different types of definitions that we could look at, before we have to make a final decision on this?
We could bring that forward on the 11th.
Right. Like I said, I just don't want to create a loophole where, you know, as a developer, I can build unfinished room above the garage, and an unfinished basement, and then qualify for the 2,500 square foot, and have the lower setbacks. And then, it would be a fairly simple task for the homeowner to finish those spaces. The second thing is, we're talking about having the ability to get reduced setbacks by getting permission from the neighbor. Does that, or can, again, are there examples of this where, I'd like, I think that's reasonable for a single homeowner who's trying to build. I'm not comfortable with that for your short and long plats, where a builder could potentially go and pay someone to give them permission to kind of get reduced setbacks on the adjoining properties. So I'd like to explore if there are examples of that, of this kind of, you know, get your neighbor to sign off on it out there, and how they, again, avoided any kind of sort of loopholes for large developments on that.
So the way that currently works is, I think the way it's drafted in the code is that you would only be able to obtain permission for a reduced setback from a property that's under separate ownership. Our legal staff are looking at that, they might have some comments on that. The question that the commission raised was whether a builder could internal to the division, because they own the entire division, grant themselves a reduction of setback across the entire division.
Well, I'm just thinking, even if they don't do the whole division, if I could do the whole outer rim, because it borders, you know, each one of those lots borders something different, right? Then I could get exemptions on 10, or something like that, and I wouldn't want to see us be able to create that, again, that kind of loophole. It feels like that's a great kind of thing for, I own a piece of property, and I tried to fit my house on it, but because of the shape, I'm having trouble meeting the setback, so if my neighbor's okay with it, I can get an exemption for, you know, that side yard or something like that. It doesn't feel like we want to create this as something that, again, a developer could get 10 exemptions along a whole row of homes for, so. Thanks.
I would concur with what Councilwoman Stewart just said. But aside that, I'm wondering, when we have a public hearing, if staff can provide some visuals, I know you're a little hampered right now, so, but I'm trying to picture, like, in the R8 setting, what these setbacks potentially look like, especially with the addition of an ADU, right? Things start to feel a little cramped, and I realize, I think there was a threshold of 75% that they have lot coverage, is that right?
Depends on the district. So depending on the R4, R6, it-
But R8 specifically, I mean-
Yeah, it ranges from, I want to say 35%, I have to go back to the table, but up to 75%.
Yeah, I think 75%. I'm just trying to picture how these all work. I was at home today with rectangles in my Microsoft Word, trying to figure out, what does this look like?
So we are in touch with our on-call planning consultant, our on-call service, and we will be working with them to create some visuals.
Okay. And the other thing I wanted to ask you about specifically is, why in the R8 do they have a larger setback than what you have in the R4 or R6 potentially? So we average them, they can be averaged in the R4 and the R6. The R8 has a hard line at 20-foot rear setback. It just seemed counterintuitive on the smaller lot, that we have the larger setback, and we have a smaller setback on the bigger lots. But didn't, I don't know if you recall where the planning commission landed on that specifically, but I was trying to figure that out.
So if I recall, the point behind that was that when you're abiding a district of lesser intensity, so if you were in R8, and you were against an R4 or an R6, which we do have, those scenarios here in the city, that that larger setback would apply along the property boundary of the lesser intense district.
Okay.
In an effort to protect the lesser intense district from the higher intensity uses, is the theory behind that.
Makes sense.
However, if the council wanted us to pay close attention to how the language is drafted, to only offer that protection and required setback in the event that it was a lesser intense district, and that if it was R8 to R8, that there was maybe a much lesser setback implied, because in that case, you don't need to protect one district from itself.
Sure, okay. Good, I appreciate that background. Councilmember Ross.
Just a small observation on word in parallel, as in the, word is 218151070, talk about what the setback means.
What page you want to address?
56 in the packet. And in the definition of setback, it says property, comma, lot, comma, access easement, and so on. And then the other section, 1071, and further, the word line is added to those words, or included afterwards. I recommend we add line after each of those elements. In fact, buffer line is included in 1070, but line is not following the other ones. It also says structure or a building, and it just identifies structure. Oh, it's a setback filter. Yeah, okay, okay, just a line.
Thank you again. Again, this is currently on a parallel path through legal review, and you seem to have a legal mind, so I'm sure our attorneys will pick up on similar things, so.
No, thank you.
Okay. Great.
Topic number three is building height. And under the old code, we measured building height from average and finished grade. And over time, the industry had changed, and we had started to see grade be manipulated in order to make a building stand out, or a site stand out. Builders were also attempting to manage the cut and fill on a site, and not cause for export materials or import materials to be required, as that raises the cost of construction, and it also causes impact on the city's streets by the volume of truckloads passing through the city to either dispose of or import materials. So, one of the things we looked at is, is how do we address the change in character that relates to grading of a site? And one way to achieve that is to change how you measure building height from average finished grade to average existing grade. And in this case, what we did was we required that building height be measured from average existing grade, which would require a builder to survey the property prior to construction. So as they're going through their planning process to design their home and their site plan, they would be required to complete a site survey, that would have to meet a certain standard, and what they would then do is create a profile of the property prior to construction, and they would show where their measurement points are being taken from. They would then require, as part of the inspection process, that a surveyor assist them in demonstrating that they are compliant with the building height as measured from average existing grade prior to construction. The other was an issue where we had seen and heard from builder, or neighbors of projects, where there were large walls, blank walls, if you will, maybe there's some windows along the property line, five feet from the property line, and someone may be living downhill from that, and that wall, based on how foundations are designed and homes are built, could be quite tall. So they might have gone from having nothing in their back, in their neighbor's property, to having a 50 to 60-foot tall wall, five feet off of the property line. So what this is intending to address is it limits the facade height of a building to 40 feet. There are certain exceptions that are granted. When you provide architectural modulation and relief, you can go higher. However, that is something we have heard from neighbors that is less impactful to them than just a very tall, flat wall. The other was, we added, as previously discussed, an 18-foot height restriction for standalone detached accessory dwelling units. We've received comment on that. We'll definitely take those comments into consideration. If there are more comments on that, I'm happy to receive them as well. The next is mass grading. And this was in relation to large areas of land being cleared and graded beyond several feet, so grade changes that were occurring, soils being stockpiled in certain areas, and the, I guess the perception on the community that the development was not really being done carefully. So what this is, is this is a rule change that actually provides a restriction on the amount of grading, cut and fill that can occur on a site. In the past, under the old rules, there were no controls around how much you could actually cut down a site. You still had to comply with the restrictions around rockery heights and engineering design and wall heights, but there was no limit on the amount that you could actually lower and terrace out a site, or how much you could fill on a site. So what this does is it adds, with the interim regulations, we included a restriction that limited the amount of cut and fill that could occur. There were some exceptions that were included in that. We heard from the building community through meetings with them, that they wanted some additional clarity and some additional exceptions. One example was that they felt that this rule change would restrict the placement of a vault on a property, because in order to build a vault, you have to excavate below the depth that would have been allowed under that rule change. So we did add some additional exceptions on November 6th, during, after the public hearing, that the council announced some exceptions, which included things like grade changes that don't change the surface topography. So if you're digging for a foundation or a vault, another one was grade changes or cut and fill for the purpose of road construction. So we're not going to, I guess, preclude a builder or a site from having road access. So those are the types of things that were excluded from this rating restriction. We also added the design standard for garages on slope sites. We added a restriction prohibiting speculative clearing before construction permits are issued, so that someone could not go out and cut down all the trees before they even have their engineering design. Now, this, as Jeff was previously saying, as we were doing our background research on this, and, you know, over the years, we've taken in many public comments, have been to many public hearings, one of the ones that we hear most commonly about, especially after preliminary plat, and preliminary short plat has been approved, and when these projects are going into construction, is when neighbors really start to notice what's going on. And one of the comments that we would typically hear at almost, at the point of almost every project that came through the city, was why are they allowed to mound up the dirt so high? They're going to have a house that's 35 feet towering over my backyard. How can this be allowed? Why is the staff allowing this to happen? And one of the responses to that is that we did not have any regulations regarding the amount of cut and fill that could be placed on a project. So in order to provide an answer to those citizens who own homes and are living next to construction sites, we added a restriction on cut and fill and on grading. The council could choose, again, to turn the dial on that, or to choose not to have it at all, if you so choose.
Councilmember Valdroma.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work that you've put onto it. One of the things that you had mentioned earlier was adding some more clarity, and there was some ambiguity that they were asking for to get clarified, like what is a large area, or large amount? And they were talking about also quantifying criteria for measures. Are those now being addressed as we go forward here? To quantify those out?
To clarify your question, Councilmember Valdroma, when you use the term "they," are you referring to the development community, or master developers?
Public comment on the first time that this came, before we sent it to the planning commission, and the public comment, there was questions about the ambiguity on some of the terms, onto that, and I've seen that there is some of that is being addressed here. And so I'm just wondering, there were some, particularly on sizes of lots, and of large words, like the use of the word "large," and we could quantify what that meant, just to add some more clarity into it. Is that part of this process, as David was talking about, applying that?
So it's certainly been part of the process with the planning commission. I think the planning commission took some testimony last week from at least a couple members of the development community that were in search of possibly greater clarification or greater specificity related to a few of these subjects, grading being one of them. So I would expect sometime before your public hearing next Monday, that we may see some specific inputs from the development community that may actually be very specific towards this subject that's on the screen right now, plus perhaps a couple of others as well. So hopefully, we'll have a chance to take a look at those, and we can certainly discuss those next week after your public hearing, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. The next is fence heights. So one that we had heard frequently during construction was, if only I could build a fence just a little bit taller to help me restore some privacy in my backyard, now that all those trees have been removed on that property behind me, why can't the code allow me to just go a little bit higher? And our response would be, get a variance. Well, variance is a, you know, a three-month-long process that costs several hundred dollars, and most interested parties, or people who are inquiring about that, would just walk away, shaking their head, saying, well, this doesn't make any sense. So we did take a look at, so under the old rules, you would have been allowed to build a fence up to six feet in height along the property line. If you wanted to go over six feet, you would have had to meet the structure setback, and it would have required a building permit. With the interim development regulations, we allowed a fence up to eight feet tall to be placed along the property line with a building permit, when it's between six and eight feet. And there was no restriction on the run of fence, or the linear footage of fence that could be placed there, or on requiring an agreement from a neighbor, or any of those things. The commission identified that someone could place an eight-foot fence against the will of a neighbor on the property line, and their only recourse would be to file an appeal with Superior Court. So we worked with them to identify that there should be some changes made to the allowance for that eight-foot tall fence. So they identified that it should be limited to no more than 32 linear feet along any property line, which corresponds to the size of panels that you can buy readily made at Home Depot or something, you know, the lumber, dimensional lumber. According to one of the commissioners, that this would be an easier number to manage, instead of 30 feet, which, so, you know, we went with 32 feet.
Eight-foot panels.
Eight-foot panels, yeah. So the other one was that in order for you to achieve an eight-foot tall fence, you would have to receive a building, or apply for or receive a building permit, and you would also not cause for conflict with any of the other construction codes. So for example, if you're building an eight-foot tall fence, and it's too close to your house, you might cause a conflict with the building code, where there's fire separation requirements. The other was that you had to have an agreement with your neighbor that you share that property line with. That agreement needs to include a maintenance provision, and also, it also has to be recorded with King County Re-. to be recorded with King County Records and run with the land. So in order to achieve that, there's a few things you have to do, but if this was a project that was, you know, if you were living adjacent to a development project that was underway, this is something that is definitely attainable, working with the builder. The builder could easily work with you to put in place an maintenance agreement that any future owner of that property would, would be subject to. And they would also, they, they could pretty easily work with you to get building permit and design it properly.
Councilmember Sturrock.
Yeah, I think you answered some of that, but the whole, having to obtain agreement with a neighbor. I just would like to understand more about what that process would look like. I just think it gets challenging when you make, like, I like the idea, right? Because we don't want people putting up eight-foot fences, and I put it one inch on my side of the property line, it's still an eight-foot fence on your yard too, right? I mean, there's kind of no getting around that. It just, I think it gets tricky when you have to, you know, require people to get signatures or permission from their neighbors. So I'm wondering what that process really looks like. Yeah, when you describe it in the, the context of it's a development project, that completely makes sense to me. But I hate the idea of, you know, I go to my neighbor, and then they say no, and now I'm mad, and that's not neighborly.
Yeah, this, this, I, I have no answer to your question, Alitha, that heavy lifting to David, but I, I wanted to make a comment on this one. This is a tough one because it, the, the need for it, again, going back to where did we start with this? We started by going through public complaints, public testimony, you know, appeal hearings, and, and compiling this list of subject matter of, this is what we're hearing from our, our citizens and our constituents. So, you know, the eight-foot fence is, is a real tough idea, but the, the situations where it has come up, and when it's come up, it's been exhausting. It's usually combined with the elevation changes from a new project. And somebody, an existing resident, citizen of San Amish, is interested in getting a little bit more screening from a new development that's going in, so they can have a little bit more privacy, you know, in their backyard, their side yard, whatever it is. So you've, I don't know if you've seen it yet, the planning commission certainly saw the LeBron James eight-foot statue that one of our esteemed citizens brought in on a stick, and, you know, eight feet's pretty tall. So this, this is definitely a tough one. The planning commission had, had a good amount of dialogue about it. And I, I think, again, tried to strike some balance with limiting the run that it could be, and, you know, trying to, to bridge this here with, with agreements between neighbors. Again, typically, when these situations have come up, historically, the, the neighbors have been a developer and then an individual property owner and an, an existing development. That was already that.
And that, that situation makes complete sense. I just hate the idea of, you know, when you, when you give another neighbor control over what I can do, and I get the fence, it's really a shared commodity there, so it makes it challenging. But thanks for that.
We, we have his, you're correct with the wrong, David, but we have not, we, we don't receive regular inquiries from just plain-level lots in existing neighborhoods of people wanting to build eight-foot fences.
Good, excellent.
Yeah.
I think there's a few things in here, I just have a couple questions. So limited to thirty-two feet in length, what if your lot is longer than thirty-two feet, and yet you're backing up to a brand-new development right behind you? Why thirty-two feet? I, I, okay, for that Home Depot thing and the length of the panels, not translating in terms of, in your world?
So the multiple, yeah, so the multiple of eight, I think, came from discussion with the planning commission of, when you buy pre, pre-fab fencing, it would come in eight-foot sections, right? So that's where the multiple of eight comes from. The thirty-two specifically, I, I think there was discussion with the planning commission about the, the eight-foot section, or the eight-foot run would need to be up thirty-two feet maximum, would need to be strategic as to where that additional screening is, is needed along a particular property line. I think thirty-two was a number, again, going in multiple of eights. Twenty-four maybe seemed not quite enough, forty seemed a little too much, thirty-two was right there.
So, so this is one where you, the classic example of, hey, I have a patio that's existing, and they just built a new house back there, and they have a bay window or, or a kitchen window right there, and they're always looking at me. So if you were to place it right in the right place, then your patio is, is afforded protection and privacy. But what the commission didn't want is them to just run the whole thing for no reason because that, you know, they, their perception was, is fences are barriers to neighborly relations. And if you're trying to afford yourself some privacy, sure, that's great, but let's not go block ourselves in. And we heard that comment from some of our citizens, too, that came and delivered testimony during the, the public hearing.
Sure, and I appreciate that. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the reality of it being limited to thirty-two feet, and somebody who is, and I can think of one right off the top of my head, where the elevation changed very significantly, and all these people are gonna have a line of houses, and there's at least three or four houses that are going to have them peering down, and if they're, if they're, and I haven't gotten out to measure, but if their backyard is longer than thirty-two feet, they're gonna be limited to thirty-two feet, and then suddenly they're gonna be dipping down to a six-foot fence, and that just kinda looks weird anyway.
So, if, yeah, if I may, sorry to interrupt. So there's a couple of questions here for the council to think about over the next few weeks. One is, first and foremost, are you interested in eight-foot fences, yes or no? If the answer is no, then we move on from the subject and focus on something else. If the answer is yes...
I guess we're done.
Yeah, yeah, we're done. If the answer is yes, then you need to put a little thought into, again, what we're discussing here. Do you wanna limit the amount of run on a particular property line for an eight-foot fence? Do you want to require an agreement with the, the adjoining property owner, yes or no? You know, do you wanna require a building permit, yes or no? Those would be questions that you would wanna think about in your mind if the answer is yes, we wanna consider eight-foot fences.
Yes, and, and I, and I recognize that an eight-foot fence is pretty darn tall. I mean, I think inside it looks, whoa, outside it might look a little different, it's like the Christmas tree, right? You pick it out outside, it looks really small, you get in your living room, you're like, oh, shoot, it's, it's breaking the ceiling. But I, and I like providing some flexibility. The, the agreement with the affected neighbor, I, I do like where the planning commission landed on that, and that's something that exists now for other things. In fact, I just had to sign one because my neighbor needed to do something or wanted to do something in their yard, and I had to sign an agreement. And I could have, I suppose not, that I was trying to neighborly, figure it would affect me too much. But I know a fence might seem more contentious. I also don't think people are going to choose the eight-foot fence over something like trees. In fact, that same scenario that I'm thinking of on the top of my head, that's exactly what these people did. They came in, they cleared it and graded everything, raised it up, and now there's a line of trees there. So I think people will choose the more aesthetically pleasing option over a fence, but I like having the flexibility of a fence if somebody needs that, and a tree maybe isn't an option. Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I just wanted to, to remind everybody that in most of these subdivisions, the CCNRs call up the, the height of the fences. So we don't need to, in most of these subdivisions, the CCNRs already cover that the height of the fence is already what it's gonna be.
I'll now supersede. Yep.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. Mayor Nacho just mentioned it. I'm thinking of a, just in, in my neighborhood, we do have, you know, coven, and we have, you know, a specific fence height requirements, and we had to replace our fence twice this year, probably, it's windstorms and rot and all that, so I was aware of this. On personal level. What we found, specifically with like decks and, you know, patios and that kind of thing, more often than not, I think the issue of fence doesn't even, I mean, at least in my experience, it's not even that big a deal. A lot of it focuses, where are you planting your, your griteries so as to serve as a shield or a block? And is it coming over onto my property line? That's the kinda issue that we've encountered in terms of the Quahani subdivision, and whose responsibility is that? And then the, you know, your shrub gets blown, or it starts to rot, and then the fence, and then the root ball comes up, and it's, now it's getting into the fence, and it's, you know, taking up the guys next to ya, not that I know anything about this, but taking...
I was gonna say, this is getting off my spit.
You know, the, the boundaries, the property lines with fences is one thing, right? But, you know, well, like, for example, I'm thinking of an example where there's a root ball that comes up, and suddenly you're, you're knocking over somebody's fence post, you're getting into their, their patio pavers or something like that. Just giving you an example, something I, you may not be aware of. So that kind of thing, is that, I mean, that's kind of the more real-life thing that I think, I mean, more to W. M. Moran's issue, that a lot of the, the covenants and homeowners associations deal with fence heights, so we're trying to supersede that?
No, you can't.
Or we, we're not superseding that by going with six versus eight? Is that...
We, we wouldn't be able to supersede that, although this is more typical to the exterior of a new division that's being constructed against existing developments. So it might be a shared property line between an, an older neighbor and a new home being built.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure whether the, the community covenants would actually address that or not. I mean, in this case, we're just simply trying to provide another tool, a toolkit, to help neighbors navigate change. It was a temporal thing as well. We would all prefer they plant vegetation, but oftentimes that vegetation takes a while to establish.
Well, that, yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, though, right? I mean, we're trying to start, let's get more trees on the property, more, you know, drainage, and just our tree canopy in one shape or another. And to me, that's the kinda thing that we could encourage. And I think if we give them, give citizens, ourselves, enough leeway here on, on, on a structure like a fence, would we wanna encourage them to try to plant a tree, or maybe a, a mature shrub or something like, like that as opposed to a, a fence? Can we incorporate that kinda language? That, would that be something that we could include in this kind of developed regulation? Like, we want, we're encouraging this, it's like, right, building policy, public policy through regulation, right? We're trying to encourage, well, we're trying to encourage good neighbors, but at the same time, I don't know, you know, we wanna have shrubs and, and griteries at the same time as well. So how do we incorporate that kinda language rather than saying, your height, your fence height's this or that? It just seems kinda overburdening to me.
So I, I think that that would be a different type of regulation that would apply to a development project such as a landscape standard. Given that we do have tree retention requirements, and when you remove trees, we are, we do require replacement. We don't have a requirement that that replacement is done to create a, a visual barrier between a, a new development that's occurring in an existing development. That would be a landscape standard that would need to be added to the code to require a perimeter landscape strip. And we've heard that from the council in the past, that hey, maybe we should explore looking at that. There are, there's another one coming up with regard to what the commission also suggested we look further into, and that is that with the grading standard, that we look at a way to require the perimeter, the outline of the property blend better into the existing topography and the existing landscape and setting. And what that might be is, is instead of putting a wall and they grade a slope, they plant some trees and plants in that area. So that is one thing that we do plan to look more into as we proceed with the second phase of code drafting, in the, starting in the fall, I believe, of this year into, into 2020.
Thank you.
I think we're good.
The next is parking. And under the old rules, we did not require a certain number of on-street parking spaces with a division. With the interim rules, we added a requirement that every new lot created through subdivision and short subdivision include the equivalent of one on-street parking space. We received comment that that was unclear as to what that meant. So what we did with the proposed regulations that the planning commission has brought forward to you is that every new lot created through subdivision and short subdivision requires the equivalent of one on-street parking space to be provided in the street, the public-private street first, or if the designer can demonstrate that they cannot achieve that for various reasons, that then they provide it in an area that is shared by the HOA. And if they cannot achieve that, then they are, are allowed to provide that in the driveway that services each new residence on, on the, in the project.
Let's move to it.
Yeah, one of the questions I have is, again, sort of, what, what is the genesis of this particular one? Is it character, because we have regulations about how much street frontage, for lack of a better term, the lots need to have. Is this really to address parking, or is this more of a character? Is the genesis of this more from the character side?
So we had a, a member of the community provide public comment on January 31st at the, the public hearing with the planning commission. That individual summed up the comments that we receive regularly after projects have been completed, is with regard to the usability of a project. When somebody has a holiday party, I can't remember what party it was, they said exactly, but this is, was an individual that lived just outside of a new, new project, new development, and she lived in an older established neighborhood where there were no, no parking signs posted on every street. And what would regularly happen, as she indicated, was when somebody in that new division had a party, her, her part, her portion of the street would be flooded with cars, and there would not be a single car parked on the street in the, in the new division. So what, what we're looking at here is, is just a simple adjustment to ensure that, that should someone, or should a division be constructed, that they actually have enough parking, given that, that we have, you know, fairly large homes, and that we have a higher, higher per household census than some other cities, that we are more than, more likely to have larger gatherings in our homes than, and we likely shouldn't consider the requirement of parking within a division. Now, what we might also be seeing, as was pointed out by some of the other commentators, I believe, from the building community, was that the city in the past, prior to my time here, had, had gone through a, a series of projects where they had granted quite a few public works variations. So what this was, is this was a reduction of the standard in narrow, a narrowing of the road, if you will. And what that did was it, it said, hey, the, the public works standards, if you were to prescriptively apply them, would require on-street parking, would require adequate space for on-street parking. But what was going on is, is developers were coming in and asking for a public works standards, under the interim standards variation, which would afford a reduction in street width, it would eliminate any parking that would have been available by the placement of no parking signs in order to provide adequate fire access. And there were various reasons why, why developers were asking for this. Less impervious, less stormwater retention is required, less cost for construction, also less, less deduction from your density calculation, because if you look at how we calculate density here in the city, we take the gross lot area, and then we subtract out the critical areas and the roads that are being used to service the development. So a, a builder might be able to yield a whole other unit by, by getting a reduction in, in the requirement for road width.
I guess, again, sort of, in the vein of words matter, I'd like to see if there's some way we can achieve this through stricter appliance of the already existing public work standards of road width. I think that by having a code that says, we're going to make sure that every house has an additional parking space, we're saying, hey, let's have more cars. And I thought we just spent the last thirteen months, and some of you even longer, saying, we want less cars. So I know in commercial building, in many of the jurisdictions, for instance, on the Microsoft campus, they don't build enough parking spaces for the number of offices in each building so as to encourage people to take public transit. So I would like to see us not specifically write language that says, we want additional parking for each house. If we have public work standards that have particular road widths, and we now have a standard that says you have to have a certain amount of frontage on a public or private street, then by applying those as-is, we should achieve enough parking without advertising to people that we're gonna give you more parking, which kinda says, hey, we want you to have more cars, when in fact, that is not what we want people to have.
Speaking of tests that, that we have actually been applying the public work standards, and this would be a question for the city engineer, without deviation. So the, the city adopted new public work standards. The new public work standards do require adequate space in a, in a local street and in a arterial street for parking. And one of the, one of the things that, that they look at very closely now is when a, a request for deviation, is what it's called, I believe, the new standards as opposed to variation, the interim standards, is applied for. We look very closely at the rationale and reason behind that. We look at the implication it has on the density calculation, to see if they're actually gaining a unit. And we have caught some of them that have come in where they were attempting to gain a unit, and we have a fairly strict policy of if you're going, if you're attempting to gain a unit by asking for a deviation, it's definitely off, off the table. One, one of the other things is, is that we, we do... One, one of the other things is, is that we, we do require that each home have two off-street parking spaces. So, they, they do provide that spa, that parking space off-street. Another thing to consider is, is that we have not seen these projects that are subject to the new standards be built yet. So, the projects that we're seeing in the system are a result of the old standard and the old application of the standard. So, because projects under RCW 58120 and RCW 58170 can last a very long time under vesting allowances, we may not see some of those actually daylight and be built for another few years here. So, this, one thing to consider is, is, you know, is this requirement going to change how things appear in the future? Or is this a knee-jerk reaction to the past?
So, a quick, a quick question or comments as it relates to parking. I don't know ultimately where the council will land on this, but I think there should be an addition of R1 in here, where clustered, because the clustered R1 zone looks just like R4. And so, it should mirror the R4. And then, you know, I think David, you make a good point about vesting and whether or not we provide that. But I wonder too about potentially if, if the public work standards, the current ones that we're now subscribing to, will provide this, the parking that the goal was in this, based on driveway configurations? I mean, I think about my own neighborhood and I have a fire hydrant in front yards, so no one can park there. So, they have to park further down, but then they can't park there either because you have to park five feet away from a driveway. And then there's another, so there's nowhere to park in front of my house legally. So, there are lots of consideration. And we don't have the, the parking signs, even though we are one of those streets that's twenty feet wide and so people can park on our street, it becomes interesting. But I just wonder if driveway configuration has anything to do with that and why this may still be necessary even under the public work standards, is that?
I think, I think that was the other element in this, was trying to force some thoughtful design to provide meaningful on-street parking within the standard that already exists. Because we get far too often, you know, staggered driveways and then you just added fire hydrants and, you know, other things that, that we just, you know, access to stormwater facilities and so forth, where it really starts to chip away at that curbside space. And then we end up with these fragments of curb where you can't realistically park a vehicle. So, you know, it becomes that wasted curbside space, which then it just seems to just shave away over and over and over again within a development, what we're seeing. So, again, going back to original intent, this was to get some thoughtful design to, to help increase that supply. It ended up in a numeric standard. That's something we can certainly think about from the staff perspective here as we look forward to this process with you and the city council.
And we talked about it with the city, city engineer, and they did not see conflict with the public work standards here. They actually agreed that it would cause for more methodical design by the designers. And that they, they agreed that they were seeing stuff that was not usable, but they didn't have a tool in their toolkit to require them to think about driveway placement and curb cuts and those sorts of things.
Okay. Councilor, start.
Might I suggest that we look at wording that says that we add a certain number of off-street parking spaces for a, a community in its entirety, which would not necessarily equal one per new lot. That would give people that flexibility when it's a party, but not necessarily guarantee that every house can have that additional car. Because again, that is, that is not really what we're trying to encourage.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
I would say I like this wording because, I would say I like this wording because I think that the one car per household makes the most sense. I really don't like the social engineering and I don't like not enough cars per unit because I just, I think that runs into nothing but problems.
So, are there any more questions up here?
Thank you. The next topic, topic is on street frontage. Under the old regulations, there was no requirement that a new lot created through subdivision or short subdivision had a street presence in street frontage. With the interim regulations, we added a requirement that each new lot created through subdivision and short subdivision requires thirty feet of public street frontage, which would require that lots be laid out and oriented in such a manner that all lots front public street. Through meeting with the, the focus group, meeting with the planning commission, hearing from the public, we determined that in order to achieve the same outcome or that what we were trying to, to, the, the design we were trying to, to see brought forward by designers was, would also be allowed under twenty feet, or excuse me, thirty feet of street frontage on a public or private street. So, whereas the interim rule says public street, we added to the language and some flexibility for it to say public or private street. One of the planning commissioners also recommended, and the rest of the commission agreed, that we should add an allowance for averaging, so that the average is thirty feet, but it's not less than twenty feet along a public or private street for any lot created in a subdivision or short subdivision.
I have a quick question. On the private street, as we're talking about new development, I'm assuming for the most part, those are going to be public right of ways, not private. But we do have a provision for X number of houses, and I can't remember how many it is off of a private road. How many is it, three or four?
I can't recall. I think it's twenty, actually, off a private road.
Okay, wow, okay.
That's what the public work standard comes in the table. The one, the one that was generating this, this comment that we'd heard and the concern was related to some of the older divisions that we've seen, where we were seeing four, five, six homes serviced off a private driveway. And, you know, here we have the snow. And again, one of the things I hear from the staff when I came into the office this afternoon was, do you know how many calls we got about people asking us when the city is gonna come plow our private driveway? And, and that, that's a concern, is that when, when you end up with these, these shared private driveways, is that if, if you're at the end of the line and your, your neighbors upstream of you don't wanna shovel, then you have to shovel your way all the way out. And it, it, it's something that causes the tension between neighbors. You know, again, the, 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 the more common one is trash cans, we'll get into that, if you all understand that complexity. But what, what we were seeing is, through past designs, is a very short-stamped cul-de-sac that would then have three or four private driveways radiating off of that cul-de-sac, and the lots would be stacked into the back. And the, what, what this is doing is, it's, it's asking the designers to take a little bit different approach, where they're required to design a public and private street combination through the entire division that would allow for better servicing of each of the homes included in the division.
To answer the question from a moment ago, you were both wrong. Public work standards, private streets shall serve a maximum, and now you're welcome.
Okay, we'll split the difference, call it good.
I was pretty far off, I apologize.
Press is right rules.
The last change was one that was recommended during public testimony on November 6th by one of the members of the audience. And this was that we clarify within the city's clearing and grading code and rules around when work is allowed in a critical area. And that a, a clearing and grading construction permit always be required when someone is pursuing construction activity in a critical area. And the, the rules were attempted to get there upon a, you know, we evaluated them and we realized the rules were really trying to get there. I think that's what, what they were trying to say, but just wasn't clear. So, we added some clarification that anytime you're pursuing work in a critical area or a buffer, that a, that a permit is required.
No questions on that?
So, in addition to those items, as part of the public hearing, the planning commission also recommended the following items be further considered during a second phase of code amendments. The first of those is consider adding a daylight plane restriction on building envelope. This is a fairly complicated one, given the topography that we have here in the city. That's how you would manage the, the point of origin and measurement of a daylight plane. On a slow property, that can get pretty complex. The other was adding a restriction on building height based on building segments. If you had four plates in a single-family home that stepped down on a hill more than four feet, it might warrant setting the, the building elevation for each of those four plates individually, which would create for a different method of measurement of homes. And you might see roof lines that correspond more closely to topography as a result of that. Another one was adding a landscape requirement for setback areas of projects that front arterial streets. The concern here was, is that we're seeing homes build right along our arterial streets and there is minimal setback and screening from those streets. The next was adding, and this is one I already raised to you, was adding a restriction on grading around the perimeter of a site to better blend the existing grade of an adjacent property into the finished grade of a project site and better protect trees and existing vegetation around the perimeter of the project site. This one really was, was raised as a result of concern that if you're, if you're putting in, you know, pursuing a six-foot cut along the property line and putting a rockery in, that that can cause not only severe impacts to your own site, but to your neighbor's site as well if they have trees that are not located on your property, but that the predominance of the root zone is located on your property, then, then it's gonna cause impact to those trees. The last one is cleanup amendments such as grammar and word choice. That we did receive a few public comment letters that identified, not only in the amendments that we're pursuing, but, but throughout the code, some other errors and problems with our code that we would wanna clean up.
Councilor Ritchie.
When is the planning commission gonna be looking at these additional items?
So, assuming that we get this phase one wrapped up here in the next month, but I'll talk about that in a second before we part ways. But we've got a couple of other important legislative reviews that we need to go about completing. We have a state mandated deadline to go through our Shoreline Master Program update review process. We've gotta get their reinforced management plan in front of the, in front of both the planning commission and the city council for legislative review. And we have some small, small cell wireless technology code amendments to respond to SEC regulatory orders that we have to move through the same legislative review process. So, we need to get those three things done. And then we expect we'll be then rounding back around to phase two of this project later in 2019.
Councilor Ross.
Yeah, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned you had a summary of what the, the code was before the changes. What, and then what the planning, what changed from that to then what the planning commission recommended changes? Kind of like a, a walk from existing code to final recommendation for planning, kind of three tiers. And you've gotten a lot of the changes articulated here, but I didn't see where we were and what was the old code and so on. You can get something, that'd be really awesome because I, I was really excited hearing you mention it.
Sure, so my comment may have been misunderstood. David was gonna walk you through kinda from A to B to C, but we can certainly, I mean, we can pull something together that will help pull that together for you as well. So, if I may, just quickly then, so we're on February 4th, 2019. So, again, next Monday, what we're hopeful of is that the council will open and close your public hearing on this matter. And then, to the extent that you are so inclined, next week, we can have some, some discussion and perhaps get some direction from council if there's specific things, potential changes or what have you that you would like us to work on for a few weeks. We'll be back to you on March 4th for a first Monday study session, just like the one we had, where I would presume we'd be reporting back to you on our progress and certainly answering other questions or clarifications that need to be had. And to not extend the interim regulations, we would need to have council adopt something on March 5th, the first Tuesday of March. If we're not able to do that that night for whatever reason, then we would be looking at needing to extend the interim regulations to, to close this phase one out. So, I wanted to leave you with that information before we part ways.
Thank you. Jeff and David, appreciate your work on this.
Thank you.
I don't see any more questions. I think that's all we have unless there's...
Oh, we have to see...